I'd like to thank everyone for coming to the meeting tonight. And I guess we'll get started by looking at old business. The first item, the Cooley bill is still waiting on response from Jennifer Thornburg.
She gave me a response.
She gave you the response?
Yes, that's been up there, I guess, a state of a little bit later than normal. She said that we could take it out to six months with no interest. That we put the payment at eleven thousand, six hundred and twenty-one forty-three.
But if we flip that other, the forty thousand?
We can do it all.
We can do it all. So that's fine.
It's gonna help us. Even if we did the forty thousand and crammed, we could stress the other two into two month payments. So we're not probably all the full payers. Interest free.
Did we have that bill the last time that we were here, that big bill?
Yeah, we did.
This is the bill for all the repairs that we had to do from the non-biodegradable things that have been flushed down toilets. And the bill added up to sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty cents. So that's gonna have to be absorbed by the people that didn't commit the crime as well as the people that did commit the crime. So we've got some grant money, what, forty thousand?
Forty-four thousand.
Forty-four thousand. And so if we apply that to this bill, since they're under the same...
Label?
Label, we can pay this all off in one month without interest. But we have to stress, you know, these diapers and baby wipes and whatever else people are flushing down.
So Heather and I were talking about it today, we're gonna send out a reach alert to let everybody know that just because it says flushable does not make it flushable.
Not when it travels all the way to Connersville.
Yeah, we're gonna try to do that once a month. We, Dwight had talked about putting it on the bill card. We just don't think there's gonna be enough room unless we did it on an opposite day or oppos- there's not gonna be enough room. Yeah, because we have to put the board meeting and all that stuff in there, we just, we just don't think there's gonna be enough room.
Just a separate notice?
We're just gonna send out a reach alert.
So if I could, I do need to let you know, and I talked to Terry about this earlier, but the county has committed forty-four thousand dollars of the county's park of funds to a sewer project. It's not this sewer project, but it was, it was some upgrades to your sewer system. And I expect, I believe, that we'll be able to help you with this instead, but I need to, we need tomorrow.
Okay.
So the commissioners, just like you all, I can't make a decision on my own, I need to talk to the other commissioners and be able to jointly arrive at that decision. So, so we're not committed at, at this point to anything but the original sewer project that we agreed to, which is not this repair project.
And in the event that that doesn't happen?
Then we'll take it out six months.
We have the six month interest free?
So I'll keep you posted.
Okay.
Thank you.
You know, pretty anything about the bath ships that go in there?
Um, I'm pretty sure that you told me, I meant to ask him when he came in, that he has ordered them, they're just not here yet, just like the stop sign. We're waiting on the poles, I'm not gonna look, it's right on, we're waiting on.
And at this time, we welcome Jeanette Hansley, our newest member of the council. She's been here before.
Sorry.
All right, so then the issue with the old plow, we did sell that for a hundred dollars, so that's out of the way now.
Pitcher.
To pitcher. And the fire department has received the title to the old fire truck, and they're gonna run an ad with bids to be rid of that. The new alarm system will be completed, what, by Friday afternoon? And also under old business, there's a request that the park board meetings be moved to the council, to the council room due to the comfort of everyone involved.
Well, we actually, when I was park board president, we allowed citizens to participate in the meeting to get their input, to help this movement in directions that we took. So, that works.
Does anybody else have any old business?
Sure.
Jeanette?
Old business.
Dwight?
Old business.
Just getting over, brother, just kidding.
Junior, you have any old business? All right, we're good on that. So we'll move on to new business. And Dwight has a example of the coffee cup that will be selling during the 200 celebration.
It is grateful if you rock it over.
Dwight highlighted him to go first.
There's, I've had the thought of doing another one for the Milton Sharpshooters.
Yeah, I'd like one of those.
Yeah, I kind of would.
Do you have anything you wanna tell us about the shirts and the cups?
Um, right now, we get, the cups, they run about eleven hundred dollars for two hundred and eighty-eight cups. And I paid for all the artwork on that. That's like eleven hundred and thirty-seven dollars for two hundred and eighty-eight cups. Would that be enough or not, who knows? Possible, then if we do, if we look into like the sharpshooter, with their sharpshooter logo, which is this one, doesn't have a gun in it. It's a basketball player. I didn't think the one with the gun would be appropriate.
I liked the one.
But to do artwork on that, and maybe just do maybe like a hundred cups or two hundred cups?
Yeah.
Throw in there, because if you get the alumni coming in, they may be really interested in buying a cup. And I haven't even presented this to McCrinning yet, so they can even look at the artwork to learn, get everybody's opinion here first on that. So, that's kinda would help with celebrating the anniversary of Milton being 200 years old. I guess the other thing is, is that when are we gonna celebrate? You know, July 5th is when Milton's 200 years old. There's been, stuck out there looking in October. And, you know, July 5th, yeah, it's right after the 4th, even if it's a small group of people meeting, doing it maybe on a Saturday is better than putting it off to October.
It could be snowing.
How many have you ever been to bicentennial parade?
I don't know, Cambridge, whatever, they had never gone real young.
Then if you stretch it out for two days, we're gonna let the fireworks on Saturday, on that Saturday.
Dwight and I talked about this Saturday ourselves, and I suggested you have like a townwide picnic with live bands, that way for one day, that way people can just be there to celebrate, and bring their own food, and listen to the entertainment.
Just make the fireworks.
Yeah, you good?
It's like the fireworks.
You want to have two days together, it's your celebration.
They're basically, they're just gonna do it on Saturday, that's, and that's the Saturday, we're gonna do the party on Saturday. Which is the sixth, July 6th.
We keep the celebrations separate from the canal days, and Milton Canal Day's never been in October, it's always been the first weekend of August.
Yes, and the hottest weekend of all.
Well, the reason why, when Rich died, it was over that, is that's, first weekend of August, there was nothing going on in this area that weekend. We had the only thing going on at the time. But you gotta probably, should wait till like next year before you do that, it's too late now to start.
For Milton Days?
Then if you're gonna have food vendors or something like that, you might scrounge a couple up in here, whatever. But I would suggest you keep celebrations separate for Milton Days.
Me too.
I say just have like a townwide picnic, people bring their own food, sit down somewhere, you have ball dymus, instead of having all this debris and stuff all that out, have the ball dymus, you got plenty of parking, have live bands come in there. And your biggest expense doing that would probably be just having a couple porta pots in there.
And tents.
Well, you need tents for it.
It's gonna be hot. Trust me, we're out there in that field on July 5th every year, we're melting.
All of the people wanna bring their own little pop-up tents, that's fine, but the tents, the chairs, tables, it's gonna be a big expense. That's gonna be a big, you gotta worry about the funding enough for that. I'm all for having a celebration, whether it's hard ways to do it, cheaper ways to do it. You get local bands to play for free, I know a couple of them, I can probably contact, and they're local. That'd probably get you scared on that one, but it's about it.
When are you having Milton Days?
Next year.
I'm...
Twenty-five.
I'm not doing it for $2.
Yeah, it's, it's too late to get vendors.
He's doing it next year.
No, I'm not. I did four years straight, Rich I turned a good profit, and a couple of bad apples, tried to take over and ruin it, so.
So you're gonna volunteer?
No.
Yeah, we would.
We'll table that.
Table.
We're gonna table this discussion, this discussion.
I, I just wanna throw this out there, Terry was gonna work on the bicentennial postmark, did you still want her to do that? She's just been so busy, but she can take on one thing.
Yeah, I think it's worth looking into.
Yeah. Well, she works for the headquarters in Washington DC, so I think she probably would be able to do it. But we'll check, I'll have her to check, I just asked her if she's interested.
Yeah, 'cause I've asked the post office already here, and it was kinda like, uh, it wasn't sure.
So you're interested in me going ahead and asking her to pursue it?
You guys wanna vote on it?
We can.
Wanna vote on it?
Make a motion?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye, it's happy. All right, well, we got Scott here, we got, they say the quotes for the gate valve and the two breakaway novels.
Yep.
Richie's gonna try and get another quote on top of these, is that what?
Yeah.
The quotes we got for that is really good prices though. The other quote we came up with extremely high, and pretty much over cost of stuff, I believe.
Okay, so Richie thinks that we ought to, Kenrich stated that it's been approved, so we ought to go ahead and give council approval?
And Cedric, you asked me about what the, the stuff that came off of the old truck?
The gate valve, it came off, it all of a sudden, it's worse. The gate valve, we get taken one off of engine one, and that, we put on there, but that's, it's junk. The butterfly inside of it is what's, the problem is, that's what we need to do with it. The structure frame we had a couple weeks ago, we had to literally take it off and put on manually, and that was time consuming. So that's why we need a brand new one.
So do we need a motion to go ahead and approve this? Do I hear a motion?
We'll make a motion.
All aye.
All in favor? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Unanimous approval?
I'm sorry to bring you all around with this, 'cause Katie didn't have time to get it for me, so we'll make sure Andy gets a copy and send it to you guys.
So where do we work the police department on this? Tom, do you have anything you wanna add tonight?
Uh, just a couple things, you all have my report from January, probably in front of you. I also have the great pleasure of sharing that, well, we are in receipt of some funding for emergency medical bags for each one of our vehicles. And the Fortmans from Western Wayne or Cambridge City were kind enough to donate. One of the things that we discovered, that because of our vehicles moving quite a bit, and you come upon accidents where you're able to get there before anybody else, two of our three officers are emergency medical trained, technician trained. We didn't have the supplies to really render that aid that can be so helpful and, and quite honestly save, potentially save lives. So we came up with the idea to go out and see if we could find some, some alternative funding for them, and without batting an eye, the Fortmans said, we love to support you in it. And they donated the funds for emergency medical bag, they're up the front of the room. We aptly call them the Fortman EMS Bags, and they're fully stocked, full of medical. So, pretty, pretty, we're, we're pretty fortunate to have those kind of, to have those kind of partners in the community. So we're, yes, we're pretty happy about that, excited, and it's one of those things too, that you just, you know, is gonna, deep down is gonna make a difference. So, we're, we're super excited about that, so I wanted to share that. I did have a couple things, a couple carryover things, that I was hoping that, that you could address, one of them, we had talked about selling the Crown Vic. As we all know, we have budgetary challenges for this year, until we have an actual budget in place for the police department, the sale of the Crown Vic would really help us. So we're hoping to be able to do that, and I'd like, hopefully, to get you to move forward with voting on.
Well, the original donors don't have any objection to that, so...
Yes, thank you for adding that, I did check with the original donors, there's no objections whatsoever.
So, do we have a motion to go ahead and bid that out?
Want to seal bid on it, like the other one, or how you wanna do it?
Try to do it just like the fire truck, right?
Are you getting sealed bids on the fire truck?
Yeah, we'll get a sealed bid on it.
And be clear, we're asking for that, that's going to feel fun for you, especially the department. The second, the second thing I'd hope that you would visit this evening, we've talked at a couple different meetings about reserves and bringing on a very small, kinda dipping our toes in the water, bringing on, I recommend three reserves over the course of time. We also know that there again, we're back to, there's not a budget for them, the kind of budget that we would need could go for next year, and that would simply be a uniform allocation, whatever the board decided. So my thought was that if you all agree that, that that would be helpful to the community, we would, any reserves that we bring on would simply be told, listen, this first year, there would not be a uniform allowance, but we will be budgeting for it for the following year. If that's something you're comfortable with, great, if it's not, we understand. The highlights of that program are that they are volunteers for the community. The board would approve anyone hired before they were hired, and would make the final hiring decision, obviously jointly with the marshal. And we would limit it to, my, my recommendation would be three at any given time, because, you know, there are some other considerations with having the additional members. But overall, it's a very positive thing for the community, it just means more patrol time, once they're trained and released, so that's the other thing.
Eight hours a month, B, or?
By statute, I believe they're required sixteen, sixteen hours apiece, so that's not a bad deal for us as a community.
Would you be willing, like, to train?
There's an extensive FTO program, nobody gets, you know, nobody gets hired and gets thrown the keys to the car, there's a very extensive FTO program. We also have it written into our policy and procedures, so, and you all have direct control over some of those things. Like you could decide what you want to set the clothing allowance at, once they begin to get, once they begin to get them. You can decide how many reserves you would like to authorize in the beginning, so all of those kind of things are very customizable to what you all think is, is best practices for the community. So that's the two big things I'd hope that you would consider this evening.
Do I have a motion that we sell the Crown Vic?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Unanimous? The sealed bids?
And you might be able to decide if you wanna do the three reserves?
Opinions?
On the reserves?
On the reserves?
Money, I mean, probably gonna fund it or else, I mean, like...
When do you want to start it?
First year would have...
Nothing for the first year.
First year.
For the first year, so this will be going right on stuff for the first year.
That period of time is gonna be a training period anyway, for the most part.
But we're not paying.
Depending upon the experience level of who we bring on, but even once we get through that period, you're not paying, now, that doesn't mean there's not some costs associated with them, obviously, but you're not, they're, they're volunteers to the community.
Yeah, so we're not paying.
You're not paying.
The training.
There's no, no, there's no budget.
First year with, first year we could, we'd have, by the end of that year, we'd know rather what we needed and what we didn't, right?
Yeah, for sure, and you can, again, I can poll the different communities, I've done some of that, to find out what everybody else is, is paying the reserves in terms of clothing allowance, but ultimately, it's gonna be what you think makes sense for us fiscally. You know, it ranges, but the first year, I think we just simply say, and maybe you could even help out, maybe we could say, you know, look, if we bring one on this year, okay, we'll, we'll buy a uniform, knowing that we don't have a budget for uniform allowance, but we'll get you started, here's a uniform, and... So I think there's some, some areas that, you know, where we can work. And there's advantages for them as well, typically, these are folks looking to get into law enforcement. So it's not as though, I mean, it sounds like a little bit of, you know, you have volunteers, and we're not even gonna give them a clothing allowance the first year, it's a bit of a give and take, they're usually looking for something as well. So as long as we remember that they are volunteers, and we treat them respectfully, and give them an opportunity, I think it's a win for everybody.
If we can opt in for the first year, I mean, try that for that, we know what we need for sure. So do we need a, we need a motion to approve the reserves?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Unanimous? All right, so this time, it's, it's your turn, Jeff.
I'm just gonna say, I get to Dublin in a few minutes, just a couple of things that I wanted to talk to you about as they relate to the help program that you all are participating in. The first one has to do with the downtown revitalization program, and the county, it has pledged a million dollars to helping for-profit businesses in the towns that are participating to fix up their buildings, if they need a new roof, if they wanna do a facade project. Some of the, some of the towns that have buildings where they wanna put apartments on the second floor, those kind of things. We will have money available, but what we wanna define from you tonight is, what do you, how do you wanna define your downtown? And we want a street, I know you have a main street that is not...
Main.
That is not one, and so where do you want your downtown to be for this, for this project? We're looking at one street, and the other towns have been going with, from one edge of the town to the other on a street. I was at, I was at Ca- or, yeah, Cambridge and East German Town last night, they both picked forty, obviously, and went from, from edge to edge on forty. I've always thought of one, because I, when I worked in Connersville, and that's how I went through town, and you don't have a lot of, of for-profit businesses in town, so if there's another street that, that has more businesses you think that might be eligible, but we need for you to identify which street. You know, from, from our perspective, we're looking at making the downtowns as attractive as possible, and helping some business owners make their building as functional as possible. So that's kind of the premise of the program. We need for you to actually do two things, one, select the, the street and the, and the boundaries where people would be eligible to apply, but you, only businesses, not residences, but for-profit businesses. The post office, or a church, or, you know, those kinds of things would not be eligible to apply, but the market would be, and I'm sure there are others that, so let us know that. The second thing is, we want you to identify one person from town, could be a, a member of council, but it doesn't have to be, who would serve on the scoring committee. And so all the applications from businesses here in Milton would, would be scored on this individual. So that person has to forego the opportunity to apply for a grant, but other than that, it can be anybody in the town that you think would be, would be a good person to look at these applications fairly and, and score them fairly. So, those two things, the most important thing to decide tonight is the geography, so what street, and from where, where, and then in the next month or so, you can, you can recruit somebody that serves on the scoring committee.
Well, I would say it would probably unanimously be Central Avenue, wouldn't it? One, that's where the traffic's all on. Pizza place.
So you wanna, you wanna go from north to south on one, okay, could, could I officially adopt that, please?
Yeah, do I hear a motion that we accept the main drag as being on one? I'll make a motion, make one main drag. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So that's unanimous.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, I'll get back with you when I have the answer on the sewer project.
Thank you so much.
All right, next on our agenda, Ronnie? Be kind.
I got this ordinance violation for the sidewalk, I was blocking it with my stuff, so I cleaned that off, but there's also a second violation in here. And I spoke with the town marshal, if he's still here.
Yeah, you just checked out?
And he said that it didn't apply to me.
You're not in violation now, on that, so...
On the sidewalk, right, but I read the second that's on this. And it says, no person shall, or... And it says, no person shall, or no, it says, it shall be unlawful or misdemeanor to operate or carry. On a business of junk dealers within the corporation limits of the town.
Okay, Tom, you wanna add?
He's talking about the second.
What's, what's the concern?
He's talking about the second um ordinance violation about junk dealer.
Right.
That's his, his concern.
There's no, it's, it was gone. I don't know if you recall, but I rescinded that immediately after writing it because as you and I discussed.
Right, but you said I needed to get it clarified with the town board.
Not to get dismissed. It's gone. It's dismissed. You have nothing left to worry about there. That, that should not have been written because you don't meet those criteria.
Okay.
So apparently under the, and this is a, a little odd, but if you read into the detailed part of it, and actually, I think you had shared this with me. It defines a junk dealer as someone that deals in scrap metal.
Right.
And that's not what you do. So, and then the other issue, you abated within the timeline. So we're in great standing. I have no issues at all. And uh, in fact, I thank you for taking care of the other issue in a timely fashion. As far as the second one, my apologies if you didn't realize it was gone. Town council, I, my professional opinion is that you have nothing to even consider here. Um, I wrote two ordinance violations and warnings for them, and the second one should not have been applied, and I rescinded it immediately. So you're, I mean, if you'd like to discuss more, if, if there's more you wanna discuss on that issue, I'm, I'm not trying to close the issue down.
No, I just, I wanted to know why I was being considered a junk dealer when I didn't deal in junk.
Exactly. You are correct, and it was mistaken. I apologize for that.
Okay.
You're good to go.
And I also wanted to bring up to the board at the stop signs. Can the town paint out a white line halfway through the road? Like where you're supposed to stop at a stop sign? Because where my building is, the ones that are going out of town and coming into town.
Yeah, they're not stopped.
They don't stop for that.
Those, those white lines should be there anyway. So, I, they should be there anyway. So, yeah, if they, if they need renewed, we just need to do it.
Well, I didn't think that that would cost the town a lot just for some white paint, but it may save. One of the kids down there at the playground or if he catches their attention more than the stop sign is.
So for clarification on what I was talking about, most people probably don't even recognize it. It's just built into your, it's ingrained into your memory banks, but every stop sign typically has a white line on the street. What's, it's the area where you should stop. So, and, and the ones there are worn down or nonexistent at all. So it's, it's actually great advice.
We'll just have to gradually replace them as, you know, as we get.
All, all of them need done.
Yeah, they all need.
I, I suggest that we don't do any of that until after we're done boring and tearing and ripping up stuff.
Yeah, because of the.
And the sidewalks are coming, so I suggest after that, then start painting lines. Because it's just.
Yeah, it's just gonna be.
Boy, I mean, that's. Something, don't even tap a break.
No, I've got a camera on that. I see it running up the.
I want pretty speed bumps on mine.
Okay, are you good, Ron?
Yeah.
Alright. Alright, next, uh Donna, did you have something on the agenda you wanted?
Uh, yeah, I have a couple things. Um, number one, the guys are doing a great job, you know, that are putting in the water line. But I have a question. My driveway is mud. I mean, now it's dried up, but it's all dirt, it's all rocks. And I just wanna know, is all this gonna be cleaned up before they get out of here? Because I'm thinking if I have to use my water to, to, you know, clean this up, it's gonna be, well, you know how that is.
They told me when they get everything finished, they're gonna go around then and repair everything that they've, you know, left undone. And that'll be like grass and gravel and anything like that. They were with me yesterday. They, they're pretty good to work with you.
They seem very nice. Yeah. Then I have another que- I actually have two more things. Um, if I'm interested in buying the old city building, or the old clerk's office.
It's already sold.
Uh, was it, was it advertised or was it put up for it?
Uh, it was given to the EDC, as far as I know, and they sold it.
The EDC, originally? They sold it? Did they, did they put a bid out for it?
I'm not sure how they done it. They just handled everything with it? Who's ever lived?
Uh, 'cause I'd be interested in it, but that will have to check out further, I guess. But why did, what, what made you give it to the EDC?
That was before me.
In order to sell it, you'd have to get uh appraisals. The appraisals were, were, I'm not sure what it was.
Commercial appraisal.
But that, that still doesn't stop the fact that the town oughta have, should've had a, um, able to bid on it.
They couldn't put up a bid without the appraisal.
Well, but the thing of it is, the town, the town's people should've been able to bid on that. So was it the town that gave it to the, I mean, make, make sure of this. The town is the one that gave it to the EDC?
I mean, yeah.
And how, how did it happen? I, um, I'm assuming that somebody that buys all the property around here took it or bought it.
I don't know about that.
Do you know how much it sold for?
This went through the AJ's, through the EDC, through their lawyer, and back around for about two years. And then finally.
How did the town, how was the town, how did they have to release it to the EDC?
They just signed paperwork. The lawyer sent paperwork over and it was signed and sent back.
Did the, did your council members sign it?
Uh, the old council did, yeah.
No, it was approved by council.
When was that done? I've been to every meeting. It wasn't right before the council and voted on.
That was about a year after we come over here, wasn't it? A year and a half. Uh, we was, we was going to get bids on some, but the appraisal was gonna be more than what the building was worth.
Well, then, then maybe the person that would, would've been interested in buying it would've paid for the appraisal. I've had things praised before.
So how much, what, how much did they estimate an appraisal on cost or how much of an appraisal?
One of the five grand, something like that.
No way.
No.
Well, that's what it told us.
Well, then it was up to the town to find out about that. Who, is the sign still out there?
It's over in the garage. And I was talking to Bruce and I think Philip. I would like, right here on the corner and in the parking lot, a brick. So they can inlay it in the brick, like a wall, right here on the corner.
Or something like that, should be. I, I just don't think that this was done right, in my opinion.
It was all done by legal counsel.
I don't care if they were legal or not. It had to, it had to come from the town. It had to come, the legal only did what the town told them.
The town had assigned some kind of um deed or something that did it over to the EDC. Did the town own it, then to transfer property, you have to have some kind of deed or. What kind of deed or something to transfer?
I'm not gonna say AJ done all that. We, we, it's what we told them had to do.
So as a town, did we inquire about how, I mean, I'm just asking questions, but I, I, did we inquire about how much? Did we actually call, tact and a commercial appraiser to see how much it would cost?
We did, didn't we?
So you're telling me that that rundown building and a little, little corner here on this, I don't even know how big it is. Was five thousand dollars for appraisal?
That's what I said it told us.
Commercial appraisal, appraisal, commercial appraisal, appraisals are more expensive than residential appraisals.
I understand that.
I work in banking and we do commercial appraisals, and I've never seen it cost no five thousand dollars. And we're talking a lot bigger than a small, um, your average is about twenty-five hundred or less. And that's for a lot, I mean, that's for like an apartment complex, like more detailed appraisal. I've never, we've never paid, or one of our customers haven't had to pay five thousand dollars for an appraisal.
Well, uh, we just have to do, I mean, I'll just.
But this type of knowledge, so if you have that property address, you can see you bought it. It's all public knowledge.
What is that, what is that address?
One thirty, one thirty.
Okay. Okay, my next, uh, I guess I've got two more questions. My next question is, are they going, I jumped the gun here. I'm gonna go back to the uh people that put in the water in. Are they gonna resurface the streets?
They're, they're gonna repair everything they tear up.
They're not gonna resurface the whole thing.
And it's gonna be patched, but they're gonna repair it. Where if they dug up in the front of your house like they did mine in the street, they're gonna patch it.
Then another thing I would like to ask is, um, I know when I was on the sewer board or on the council, we had uh talked about the sewer. And who all had to pay and everything. Um, are all of the mobile homes in Milton paying sewer rate?
No. No.
Why not?
Because they were told that if they took the toilet out, they would not have to pay sewer, and that was not true. The truth is if the dwelling is still standing.
These are empty.
They are responsible to pay sewer.
It is a violation.
They can charge, we should be.
Do you want to section it?
So these are all mobile homes in?
No.
No, 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 no.
But there's even homes.
I, in here. And, and no, mobile homes, like certain mobile homes or?
Certain mobile homes, certain home, I, I'm just gonna take it away from mobile homes. Certain homeowners, because this is homes also, have been told that if they take the toilet out, they do not have to pay sewer any longer. That is a false statement. If the dwelling is still there, I can tell you I'm gonna take the toilet out. And after you leave, I can put it back in.
So are we being, are they being charged now?
I'm working on it diligently. I gotta find it. Everybody that was told that.
That's another reason I didn't go for the building that you're talking about, because you gotta pay a sewage fee on that.
Well, this right there, that's an example. It's not right for, for one person not to do it, and somebody else that keeps another person from purchasing like in that instance. But I'm just, I'm just curious. I mean, there's just some things I'd like to clarify.
I mean, there's one resident that they paid the sewer for ten years, five thousand dollars. And they're missing a wall. They can't even live in the structure that they own.
But the structure is still there.
Anyways, they paid their share of the sewer bill. It's just right down here on Canal Street. I mean, so they paid that, I mean, it was not unusual to hear where people were being told, yep, you can remove your toilet. Which is wrong, because we have a debt to pay for the sewer system. Should be, the minimum should not have been forty-seven dollars. If you, if you're not pumping water through it, you're not generating gallons of sewage. But there should have been a, a minimum amount. I'm gonna say, I've looked at what was, the debt was, and I came up like ten dollars a month. Would've been something, it'd been a hundred and twenty dollars a year. If you weren't using water, you weren't using sewage. But that money's going to pay for a debt. Not for maintenance or anything, but we have a loan that we were paying back. And all that falls back on everybody else who doesn't pull your toilet out. If, if you wanna do that, we should all just got porta potties.
Or kept our outhouses. The house that, just for instance, the house that's on the corner of River or cheated into River and Sound? The house that we were gonna tear down before the family decided to tear it down? They were paying. All those, all these years, they were paying sewage. And no one lived there. But it's still there.
Maybe while it's there, it should be taken.
Yeah. So how many, like?
I can't answer. Ask me next month.
Well, that's what I've got to say, and, and you guys are in charge of it. So if you wanna continue with it, that's up to you. But I'd like to know what is decided with things like that.
I'm turning it back on. Cause if I have to pay it, my dwelling's right there.
I mean, I got voted a trailer because I did not want to have to pay, not, there was two, but I did not want uh anybody else in it. I wasn't wanting to sleep to sit there. I had pulled out because I didn't wanna pay the sewer bill.
It's like when you came in the other day, you asked me that same question, and I said, until your dwelling is down, I have to charge you sewage. On the corner here, on Brick. A lot of people are gonna be upset, and I'll put the window back up. But it is what it is. If you're, if it's still there, I have to charge it. Or I'm never gonna get the debt paid off.
Alright, uh Joy, you're next on the agenda.
That was one of the things that I wanted to talk to, talk about that Donna brought up was that building being given away. And, I mean, I've attended years' worth of meetings, and that building hadn't been mentioned forever. And the council should've voted to sell it or donate it, as in this case. And I don't recall that ever happening. So that was frustrating to me to read that in the paper, that Milton property was just given away. And no accountability for it. So that was, that was one of the things that I wanted to bring up. And the other, and this is in no way, shape or form against our police department. But I want to address the expenses of the town marshal. The primary reason that we were originally told that a mar- marshal was being hired again was to manage ordinance violations. This is a very small town and community. And I feel like, Tom, and I, I don't know you, so don't take any offense, but I feel like you see this as a much larger city. That we're becoming a police department instead of just a person that is managing the town's needs and violations. Um, I do support us having law enforcement in town. The total expenditure, expenditure, expenditures since September of last year. Which include purchasing the twenty-eighteen Ford Explorer, now exceeds over thirty thousand dollars plus their payroll. A prime example of excess spending, as Tom gives a wish list of things that he would like to see added and included for the vehicles and so forth. Was for new graphics on the car to match the Explorer. To me, that was a want. That wasn't a necessary expense of two hundred and fifty dollars. There isn't really much of a town budget for the poli- the police department. The council did not vote last month to approve that being done, and yet it was done. So it's things like that that I don't get. Plus, there was more than three thousand dollars of other police expenses in the January expense report when I was here last, at last week's workshop. That included over fourteen hundred dollars alone in fuel for one month.
Two months. That was for two months.
That's still a lot. Um, and I realize that Tom tries to purchase items from surplus as well as getting donations, just like the bags, which is awesome.
He donates a lot, too.
And looking into grants and things. I just think that there needs to be a slowdown on expenses. And that any expenses need to have prior approval before they're, they're spent. This town just doesn't have the money.
The two hundred and fifty dollars that you're talking about for the graphics, I spent the entire weekend because I thought I did something wrong.
I'll, I'll, let me, I'll address that. So a couple, a couple things. Number one, thank you for, for expressing your opinion, because I think that's important. Whether I agree with it or not, it's an important part of government that we all have opinions and we express them. So, uh, as far as the graphics, the graphics were discussed and were approved. It's not an item that necessarily needed to be voted on. And it was documented that it was discussed. So I'm not sure where that came from. The other thing to keep in mind here is that there is discretion to pay for items like that, depending upon the expense of them, without anything, any, any kind of vote. And that, that's for a reason. You know, if you need maintenance or you, there are things that come along that the town clerk or a board member sees that, that makes sense. And it's under a certain dollar amount, they can approve that. So keep. So keep, keep those kinds of things in mind. Um, the fuel thing, I've heard the fuel thing several times, and I wanna, I wanna make sure I'm very clear about that. We're not using excessive fuel. You painted a little bit of a picture that we were, and, and that's not correct. What happened there is that the fuel bill didn't get paid for several months. So the, the, the price that you saw for fuel were a result of the fuel not being paid. Not that we used that much fuel in, in the month. So keep those kinds of things in mind, and, and it's important for all of us to know that just because something appears one way, or we want it to be one way, that's not always necessarily the truth. And those are a couple examples of things that, you know, aren't necessarily as they were presented. Um, I agree with you. There needs to be a budget. We need to be operating off the budget, and we try to be fiscally responsible. Um, yes, I do see this as a police department, so I'm glad you pointed that out as well. I'm very proud of this police department, and I'll continue to be. Um, and we'll do everything we can to make the community and the town proud. And yeah, it does, there are operati- operational costs that go along with that, so. Much as sense.
Okay, we're gonna move along to, uh, entertaining a motion that we approved the minutes of the last meeting. I'll make the motion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Approved. Now I'd like to, uh, entertain the motion that we pay the claims for last month.
Joy, did that one get corrected? I mean. Amy, did that one get corrected?
Yes.
I was looking at the thing and I'm trying to.
I'll make the motion, please, pay the claim. We've got a motion to pay the claim. Second, all approve. Aye, aye, aye.
So I can sign it?
All opposed? Motion carried. One little highlight I wanted to make was that, um, on our workshop, we decided that the workshops will be from six to seven thirty from now on. And I don't know if we need to vote on that, or... Just so everybody knows, has that timeframe. So she'll put a reach alert out for that. And I'll open it up if anyone else has anything they'd like to say tonight. All right, with that being settled, you got something to add?
Well, yeah, I mean, we got a thing from IGN regarding our freshwater. We have a half-mile radius from where our water is being pumped from. We probably need to put up some warning signs. Cause a lot more towns are starting to put up signs because within this half-mile radius, we got a junkyard here in town. Cause we're falling in that area. Plus, if you take in fact that we do have a well on South Street, yeah, it's been decommissioned for a while, but it's still there. If we ever wanted to use that, then you're gonna have two points to freshwater. So, I mean, those are things that we need to be.
We need to be thinking on.
Yeah, deep to, I mean, I'm finding more and more people putting up because people are contaminating the water system. That's, that's number one. So that's, that's on water, and I'll look into that, try to find out if ordinance. It's common.
Now, what was the material that the new water pipes are being made of?
Terry, what's the new pipe?
Material that?
Material?
It's not just plastic.
No, it's, it's got a name for it.
What it is, it, it can never contaminate your water.
So, so that takes care of the water, and then the other one is, is mobile home parks. Um, by the, by the town's ordinance, one fifty dash oh eight, you have to be two acres of property for a mobile home park. And then each mobile home should have three thousand square feet footage around it.
But now, is that from here on out, or is that, you know, if somebody's living in a nice little mobile home, we can't really tell them?
Can't tell them to go, because you got probably the grandfather clause, they've been there so long. I'm assuming that this ordinance probably came out, cause what you see you got now, people wanted to, to slow it down.
That our ordinance right now, that the ordinance we have right now?
Yeah.
What number is it?
One, one fifty dash zero eight. And to give you an idea, um, it also has in there, trailers have to be so far away from another one.
What's the number of that ordinance?
One five zero dot zero eight. And it's in, it's in that book, and it's in the old ordinance book. When I was on there eight years ago, it was in there. Um... You know, so, I mean, when you look at South Street, you got supposedly four people who wants to have trailers there. Be coming up with one acre.
When they get the bill for their sewer hookups, they're not gonna put them there, I guarantee.
No, they won't do that.
No, cause it's gonna be fifteen thousand dollars for them to tidy.
That trailer park doesn't have sewage for everyone, and, and they'll have to pay their own sewage, so.
Only got two hookups.
Two hookups.
And then you look at what we got on Lee Street, now two of these have all been there for a while. That's an even a half acre.
She just, speaking of Lee Street. Chris, that. She called me this afternoon, and she is, wants to know, if she pulls out Lot Two, trailer, does she have, does it have to be replaced in a year?
Well, first of all.
They told me that there was no timeline, but, I mean, I was always told that there was a timeline.
Well, first of all, you're gonna be in violation because the, here, the center trailer is too close to the, one of the other trailers, so if it catches on fire, it's gonna down another trailer. And what are you gonna get, a new trailer, or you're gonna get a used trailer?
Well, she's pretty. Yeah.
I mean, I think.
She's a business person, so.
Going through the town ordinance, it's been there.
For how many years? Cause my first complaint was the age of the trailer that can be put in. I'm fifty-five, and that's how old they can be. That's, I think we need to change the ordinance to the end, at least the year of it.
The other thing is, which you don't know, is what is combustible in those old trailers, in the event of a thermal event, that now they've upgraded. You know, they're more flame retardant, so that's, that's a concern. But down here in checking, uh, the trailer that's in the center on Lee Street, it's only eighteen feet away. And it's supposed to be farther than that. It's supposed to be minimum twenty-five. So if you move the center one, if you center it between the other trailer, guess what? You're gonna be under twenty-five feet. So all three of them are twenty-five feet, that's a bit, twenty.
There's a lot of violation.
Right. I would say if you pull a trailer, nothing else goes in its place.
They have to have twenty feet between trailers. Oh, twenty feet.
And I'm telling you, they probably is twenty feet. I guarantee you, cause they're so close together over there, it's probably twenty feet.
Probably exactly.
Exact. From skirting to skirting, I guarantee it. Cause they are, because they are so close together.
And they're old, and like I said, probably.
She's working on getting them replaced slowly, I mean, it's a progress, process, so she's, she's trying.
Also have to have a four-inch slab and tire on the wheel.
I'm the only one on South that has a slab, is that first one, huh?
Yeah.
Well, there's another D and J issue.
And do we have three thousand square feet that you're setting on?
Not on South Street, I don't think. It's been a long time since there were very many trailers down there. Two is all a lot, remember? Like, didn't they turn one in and took it right back out?
Down, yeah, they pulled.
In the whole?
Town, they had to pull it out, they had to go permit for the end.
Well, there's one real close to the creek.
Yeah, that was the one they had to pull out.
That's.
No, that one, that's never pulled out.
But there's only one cement slab. Well, there might be one under the trailer that they're getting ready to tear down, but there's one in the front. But that's the only slab I saw.
So then, as far as, my next question I'll bring up is, you know, this concern about residents down here east of, before you go across the bridge, that they pull, they're living out of a camper. You already, you already got it already handled.
Well, there's multiple. I drove around town and there's multiple people living in campers. Or they're hooked up to electricity and stuff like that, like they could be being looked out.
I think it's some of those motor homes over there behind, by railroad tracks or something, you.
They have, they have for five years, so like, nothing was done to them before, but it will be today.
Are they hooked to a sewer?
Bet they are.
I'll bet they are.
I don't think so. I don't know.
So it pays, it'll clean out.
It's a lot to think about.
But there is, there's multiple that is hooked up to electricity that probably needs to be looked at, that could be being.
Yeah, the one you're, the one you're originally referring to is being addressed, uh, and it's a significant problem, not just a small one. I mean, there's literally a tile, not just a small drain, literally a tile that we believe is for sewage, just running out to the.
They actually moved this weekend. They pulled that out. The one on East Main, right down there.
That was, that had the big tile up on the hill, you gotta walk up the muddy hill.
They moved it out this weekend.
Did you have anything to do with that?
We talked to him. Not so. So, yeah, uh, but one of the things I wanna, yeah, one of the things I wanna remind you of, um, if you all don't, please don't assume that I know. Okay, a couple things here. One, I'm new to this area. So, you know, a lot of times, people say, well, you know, just down to the left of the red house and around the corner. That doesn't mean anything. That doesn't mean anything to me. So you have to help me out. Sometimes you have to draw me a picture, but. I'm going to, I promise, but it takes time. So do me a favor, um, when you're seeing things, let me know. Shoot me a text, whatever. I'm super approachable, I promise. Shoot me a text, call me, whatever. Say, Tom, I need you to go check this out, or I need you to go look into it. Because I'm one set of eyes. You are what? According to my Connersville math, six sets of eyes just sitting there. So, yeah, so help me out with that. If you see something, plus the other thing is if you don't say anything about it, and you keep seeing it happen, it's human nature. You get frustrated, and you think, well, he's doing nothing about it, but maybe the thought didn't succeed. And the, maybe the thought didn't cross your mind, he doesn't know anything about it. So help me out. If you see those things, help me help you, and let me know. And you have my word, I will address them very, very quickly.
I'll pass the message to him.
Yeah. I mean, guys, I even have a little board out there, and if I'm not in the office, cause, you know, we're not twenty-four hour department, you can leave a little note, Tom, call me at such and such, or you can text me on any of the phone, I mean, whatever's your pleasure, it doesn't really matter. Send me smoke signals.
So you have a snitch box.
Okay, Sandra. No, I, it's another form of communication that I'm making available.
Rachel Whitehead that owns the house, my house from the Bay Boys, the Rollins House. She called me today, and she wanted, she couldn't be here, so she asked me to ask the council, she would like to put a carport in her driveway. Over there, and she wanted to make sure that it would be okay to put it, just to.
Is it aluminum for sale?
Yeah, aluminum carport. No signs, just their.
You can't block that drive.
Portable, I'll tell you, we'd have anything to say about it.
But there's no gas lines or anything going through there?
There would be a garage there.
Is there probably, um, oh, why they can't, she just wanted to make sure. And if she had to have a permit while it was being built, she wanted me to ask her all the questions that.
For, I wouldn't say we'd even need a permit, all it is is the steel structure that clean.
It's portable, I mean.
It's a portable car.
Does one mean asking all the questions?
She's always looking at things right, since she got, she goes by book.
I don't see any problem.
Okay, so you hear, see what just happened? That question was just asked, and we don't have to vote on it? And it was answered yes to a head? That's exactly how the decals happened. They did not, the decals on the car. We had a discussion, you guys made the decision, that's how the decals happened. They didn't have, they didn't get voted on because of the monetary value.
And actually, it was cheaper to get them than the old decals, so it was like the same price.
We got two for one.
The cars was the same price as the old car.
No, they match.
So it was like a win for one.
So this is, this is a two-story house that they wanna put.
Right, yeah. It was for sale.
Just got remodeled. As long as it sits back off the road and doesn't block.
Well, to get in her driveway, you gotta go up the, I mean, just up a little hill.
She probably will put back her slab back where her garage used to be. Probably won't put it on now.
I can ask her if it's going on the slab. That, I think they turned that into the patio though. But I think she just set it right at the top of the driveway.
It's not blocking the sidewalk.
No.
Yeah. Or visibility is bad.
There's nothing seen, right there. So I'll, to go around here?
I mean, what's the, what's the ordinance on that? It's gotta be like under a certain amount of money before you had to.
I think if you're building it from scratch, you probably have to have a permit.
I probably.
But if that's a portable deal, that she could move if she had to.
I think she's adding it just to.
She's about to do it.
And it looks so much better now.
That house was supposed to have been torn down and started with.
Oh, yeah.
Have you seen the real estate ad picture of the end? That's way too much.
For a little town.
All right, then, I would entertain the motion that we adjourn. If no one has anything else they'd like to talk about.
I make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Meeting adjourned.